Today is Pastor Donnie Flippo of Gospel Center Church. If you'll please come forward, Pastor Flippo. Everyone, please silence your cell phones. And if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for our pledge to our nation's flag. Thank you, Pastor Flippo.
Yes, thank you. Heavenly Father, we come to you today in the name of Jesus. We thank you for your mercy and grace. We thank you for watching over our city. We're thankful that we have not had any major disasters this year and that you've kept us safe. Thank you for those that are serving and leadership and their faithfulness to serve. I pray for their protection and I pray, God, that you give them the wisdom that they need. You said in the Word that the people rejoice when the righteous rule. So, Father, we thank you that we're ruling by the righteousness of Christ. And thank you for a city that acknowledged and allows this opportunity to come and to pray and to open up our hearts. You said, "If any lack wisdom, let him ask." So today, give this council wisdom to conduct the business of this great city for lives to be touched and encouraged and strengthened. And I thank you for it, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neil, absent.
Councilmember Neil was running late today. He will be joining us. He is running a little late. Well, today, we have no presentations, no proclamations or recognitions. We will have an executive session on today. But at this time, now's the time for public comment. If anyone would like to speak on any public comment agenda items, 1 through 6, if you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk at the front of the room. She will call your name when it's time for you to speak. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes. At the end of your three minutes, the red light will come on. Please ask that you please follow the rules of the red light. Thank you.
Amanda Yarborough with the Beaumont Children's Museum, speaking on item C on the agenda.
Good afternoon, City Council and City Manager. Welcome. After seven years with a home kindly provided by the city of Beaumont, Beaumont Children's Museum has impacted more than 250,000 community members, highway travelers, family members of southeast Texans, and tourists to our area. Our programs and exhibits contribute to the learning that is happening in over 200 schools that visit from our region, but also from the greater Houston and West Louisiana areas. In 2021, we provided 40,000 opportunities for igniting growth and relationships between our community, schools, and families. This year, the museum is projecting over 55,000 visitors, with an average of one-fourth of those being travelers outside of the southeast Texas eight-county region, out of state and out of country. This past weekend, we welcomed 4,000 guests. Joined us at the 11th Annual Touch a Truck and Steam Fair. This past summer, we partnered with our friends at Endorama Ventures to start the Fishing Rama Fishing Tournament and Dinner, a two-day event with over 170 fishing teams, 1,000 guests at the dinner, and 50 hotel rooms booked for that overnight event. These are facts about the Children's Museum that cannot be denied or overlooked. At the last council meeting, a member asked about the totals of what BCM requested through the hot tax and general funds application. The crowd and council members reacted with surprise. I'd like to share that this is not a surprising request compared to the group of designated organizations amounts regularly given out. Here's a reminder. Art Museum of Southeast Texas, $80,000 hot tax and $100,000 general funds. Texas Energy Museum, $95,000 hot tax. Main Street, $75,000 general funds. Heritage Society, $47,000 hot tax. Art Council, $30,000 hot tax. Cultural Arts District, $30,000 hot tax. Chamber of Commerce, $100,000 general funds. And the Gladys City Boomtown, $10,000. BCM is the only museum in a city facility currently paying a monthly rent. BCM was shut down during the reopening of COVID because we are housed in a city building, but no other museum in a city building was asked to stop operations. BCM was promised the cost of billboards and the costs covered by the city in 2021 after the hot tax and general funds applications were denied, but were told, quote, "The funds are not available for the nature center, so the funds will not be available for the Children's Museum." I asked previous city personnel about how the process for hot tax and general funds applications worked and was laughed at and then told, "Amanda, it's political." And then, for no reason, given no response. In 2021, I requested the addition of security cameras outside our doors and at our own cost for increased security suggested by your Beaumont Police Department, but were denied because this was an invasion of privacy to the guests who rent and host parties at the civic center and that we were more than welcome to file any report that we need to with the Beaumont Police Department. Asked again a few months ago and have yet to finish. Can I finish? I'm almost done.
Go ahead, finish.
And have yet to be able to receive a request answer back. And there are more stories that I could share. The museum is a neighbor to the city of Beaumont. We are physically and figuratively. We will and have continued to help at any event that you ask us to support or participate. We will assist any time a citizen walks into our museum asking questions because they think we are a city of Beaumont Department. We will help any time the civic center renter comes to us because of proximity and ease of access. And we will continue to be a good steward of the facility that we are housed. We thank the city for the proposed funds on today's agenda. Thank you to this council. Thank you to City Manager, City Attorney, and leadership for looking to the future, a future of change and for the better. We hope the Beaumont Children's Museum can be a partner in that change.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, may I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move to approve consent agenda excluding item E to be voted on separately for the purpose of recusal.
May I have a second on that motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second excluding item E for recusal of Councilmember Phil Shaw. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have a motion for item number E?
I so moved to approve item E.
May I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any?
One abstention.
We have one extension with Councilmember Phil Shaw. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. I am so sorry. Thank you. May I have the reading of item number one, please?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Council considered ordinance to abandon a portion of the alleyway located in Block 6 of the Booker Heights Edition, also known as 2745 Washington Boulevard. Thomas S. Rowell Mark W. Whitley and Associates, Inc. is requesting the abandonment of a portion of the alleyway in the blocks surrounded by Washington Boulevard, Vanette Road, Euclid, and Goliath Streets. For many years, the commercial structure located at 2745 Washington Boulevard has encroached into the alleyway by 4.46 feet. Approval of this request will allow the property to come into compliance and be ready to sell. And there's a condition. If approved, the applicant shall obtain an appraisal and title commitment for the property to be abandoned at their expense. Appraisal and title commitment must be submitted to the planning officer along with proof that payment has been arranged prior to the item being placed on the city council's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve with condition?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor with conditions? Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Yes, Mayor. Council consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of six garbage trucks and one dump truck for use in the solid waste and public works division. Six identical 2024 Western Star garbage trucks will be purchased in the total amount of $2,178,378. Total price for all of these vehicles is $2,353,390. This will be purchased through a buy board contract and staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Councilmember Turner.
Can staff kind of explain the buy board process? I had a citizen reach out to me and ask me, and I just wanted to make sure they had the act with information, and I want to ask and get it.
Okay.
Yeah, either one. So, buy board is a purchasing cooperative. And many cities and counties cooperate through the purchase of equipment and vehicles. So essentially, it meets the requirements for purchasing, but it's done through a purchasing cooperative. So basically, they handle a lot of the paperwork and also you get the buying power with the large orders.
Any other questions or comments? Also, how many trucks, garbage trucks, will be phased out because of the new purchase?
So, right now, solid waste, they have 10 routes. So they need 10 garbage trucks on the streets at all times. Usually, we have 12 garbage trucks, you know, with two in reserve. But since, you know, since the pressures of COVID and supply chain, you know, delays and all that, so it takes a long time to get parts. So now, we have, I think, 15 trucks total. But these six that are going to be replaced will probably go out for auction. We're just keeping somewhere between 12 to 15 trucks. So we do have some reserves in case one of the 10 that operate daily go down.
Great. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Council consider a resolution approving the purchase of 28 vehicles for use in various city departments. These are replacement vehicles which were requested through the city's budget process. The fleet manager reviews the request and evaluates the vehicles to be replaced. Based on his evaluation, a recommendation is made to replace worn and obsolete vehicles that are no longer cost-effective to operate. Vehicles to be purchased or replacing models range from 2009 to 2017. These vehicles will be purchased from Salisbury Ford in the amount of $1,634,883, and it's through the Good Buy Purchasing Cooperative Group.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion? Councilmember Turner?
I notice with the Good Buy administration fee is $300 per order. Do we necessarily, like you said, is it just the standard practice that you have to go through Good Buy? I'm just asking to get clarity.
So normally, we go through these co-ops, these purchasing contracts as a matter of convenience. As you know, Councilmember, anytime we buy something over $50,000, it has to be competitively bid. So these co-ops, these buy boards, already go through that contractual process for us, ensuring that we get the lowest dollars for the items that we're purchasing. So, yeah, it's worth the $300 every time we use them because we're getting these discount prices that are already competitively bid. It speeds up the process for us as well. Especially with these rolling stock vehicles, sometimes we only have a window of maybe five to seven days to order these vehicles because of the supply chain issues. And if we miss these windows, because we have a six-to-eight-week process of bidding out, we might miss these windows. So it's extremely important we're able to utilize these co-ops and buy boards.
Okay, just to follow up. With this Good Buy co-ops and follow-up, I just wanted to make sure are companies in Beaumont also welcome to this? I notice we just awarded two different from outside. I know Salisbury is a neighboring city, but are companies from Beaumont also in this?
Any company in any location in the state of Texas is welcome to participate in these. And they may have, they just didn't win the contract.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number four, please, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. Council consider a resolution approving multiple contracts for mowing privately owned, developed, and vacant property. Privately owned properties are in violation of the city's sweet ordinance when uncultivated growth exceeds 12 inches. Property owners are notified of the violation and given a specific timeframe to bring their property into compliance. If property owners fail to comply with the ordinance, city vendors mow the property, and the property owners find. Bids were requested from 17 vendors and four responses were received. The bid specification divided the city into three sections. City staff determines what section will be awarded to a vendor according to pricing, qualifications, and ability. A map of the sections is provided. And recommendation by staff is approval of the resolution.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
I have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion? I have a comment. I was looking at the bid, and it went from $117,000 to $183,000. It's a big difference, a big jump. I just want to make sure that, you know, if they're bidding the job, and I understand, you know, we're looking at the lowest competitive bid, but it went from $117,000 to $183,000 to $212,000. That's a big, big difference.
Right. So if you look at table two in your package, probably the last page for item number four, the sections are different sizes. So there's different amount of cuts that are required. The size is very different. And so that's why there's a big range between the three sections. They're not all identical. And just so the public knows, it's only a 4% increase as compared to last year's contract, and we're using the same three vendors that we had secured last year for this year. So given the, you know, given the, basically, the current environment with inflation and everything, 4% is not much at all as far as an increase. But the difference between the sections is because of the size and the amount of cuts they have to do a year.
Councilmember Turner?
We have quite a bit of vacant lots in Beaumont. And I notice it says, one contract says 200 cuttings, and it gets pretty specific. How did we come up with those numbers? And are those numbers matching the amount of vacant lots we actually have in Beaumont?
So we break our, basically, we break these vacant lots that need to be mowed into two categories. One is city and abandoned, which basically, we cannot find an owner. There usually are back taxes being owed. And as the tax collector assessor gets to them, they will put them out for auction. And then hopefully, they'll get bought and they'll start being maintained by the new property. The other category is private lots. So this is a case where we may have a property owner that we can reach out to. But I will say, under both of those categories, we have, currently, we are maintaining 7,199 of these lots, citywide. Now, that represents, citywide, we probably have 50,000 to 60,000 lots. So it does represent a pretty high, pretty high number.
And I think, Chris, that kind of helped me get a better understanding. And that's why I was asking, is the amount of cuts, do this suffice the amount of yours we maintain? It looks like it doesn't.
Well, if, again, it takes time to go through the process for them to get high enough, you know, as mentioned in the memo, it's 12 inches or higher. So we don't really necessarily maintain them to maybe the standards that we would maintain our lots. But we do get to them. So I do say that, you know, most of them are being addressed, but it is a process. It does take time. The other thing is, some of them, as I mentioned, there is a person that's related to the property. And so we try to get those individuals into municipal court so that, again, at the end of the day, they maintain the lots. But I do think we do a pretty good job at keeping it maintained. It's just, as I mentioned, you know, it's probably greater than 10% of all of our lots need attention.
Exactly.
And Mayor, if I could, real quickly, just to touch on your question. As Todd pointed out, the number difference was, as he looked in that, excuse me, that per lot, you know, cost per cutting per lot. I think Yard Boy was at $78 for a smaller lot. DMJ was at 80 for a small lot. And then, SMO was at 70 for a small lot. But again, the cost per unit is approximately the same. It's just that the number of lots in different areas are very, very different. So that's why the numbers were so different.
Councilmember Getz, then Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
Chris, I just want to confirm my heard correctly. Did you say the city was currently maintaining nearly 7,200 lots?
Yes, sir. Number, well, excuse me, the number of lot cuts, 7,199. We ran the cost on that.
Is that cutting?
That's multiple cuts.
Multiple cuts of the same lot?
Yes.
So it's not 7,200 lots we're maintaining? That's 7,200 cuts?
Yes, I apologize. I should clarify that.
All right.
But last year, we did total it up. We expended approximately $640,000 in mowing.
Say that again?
$644,000 to mow.
Wow. That's a lot.
Yes, Mayor.
Chris, you mentioned taking these owners to municipal court. Are they fined in municipal court?
So a lot of the issues we have, as I mentioned, is finding an owner associated with the lot. I did run a recent report going back to August. And this is for all cases, not just weeds. But we had 140 cases on the docket. Fortunately, as we see from time to time, we just don't have folks showing up for their docket case. And so only 20 of those 140 appeared, and $100 in fines were assessed.
Just $100 in fines?
Yes, sir.
So?
So is it cheaper for them to just let us keep cutting than it is to pay the fine?
So if I can just jump in for Chris, he is correct. Most of those people are not, some of them are not residents here. Some of them are just not compliant. But most of the time, when they do file charges in municipal court, the remedy is for them to cut the yard. And so you do have people who wait till they get the fine, and they show up and say the yard is cut. For the people who don't, they show up after the fact, right? And we've cut the yard, and they still have to deal with that fine. Sometimes the remedy is, well, instead of paying the fine, go pay your cutting costs, because they do assess that cutting cost. They file the fine in municipal court, but then they also, our billing department also sends them a notice that they owe the city money for the cost of the cut. Some people will go down and pay the cutting costs and then go to the city and say, "I paid the cutting costs. I didn't cut the grass, so I have to pay the fine." And that's between the judge and the prosecutor at that time. But the remedy is to sometimes allow them to just pay the cutting costs because, in most cases, the cutting cost and the fine are either equivalent or the cutting cost is more expensive than the fine, depending on the size of their lot.
Okay. Also, I think you've told me in the past that we, for people that owe the city for them cutting their grass, we do not put liens on that property?
We do not.
We, well, we should at $500.
Say that again?
We don't for demolition.
No, not for demolition.
Well, for the grass cutting?
If it's over.
If it's over $500.
So people who rack up, like, several cuts, right? So we cut their property, every time we cut their property, it's at a $100, and they never go pay that cutting cost. Once it exceeds the $500 range, which happens, we can.
And we make that a practice to file the liens over $500 if they're current on their property taxes, too. If they're not current on property taxes, it usually doesn't make sense because property taxes alone would surpass the cost of the lien.
In most cases, the people who are not paying property taxes are the ones who are not maintaining their yards and are not paying the cutting cost, and are not showing up to municipal court.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number five, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider resolution approving the purchase of one fire truck. 2023 Pierce Custom Enforcer Pumper Truck will be purchased from Sidens Martin Emergency Group of Denton, Texas in the amount of $808,958. Designated to be Engine 6, the new truck will be housed at Station 6. This will replace Unit 7E69 in 1993 KME Renegade Pumper Truck with 81,477 miles. It has exceeded the expected service life and will be disposed of according to city surplus policy. This pricing was obtained through the Houston-Gaveston Area Council, HGA, a cooperative purchasing association providing cities with political subdivisions with the means to purchase specialized equipment.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number five. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
I have a motion on the floor? May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number six, please?
Yes. Council consider a resolution approving the purchase of three new ambulance boxes. The boxes will be purchased from Frasier, Frasier Limited of Houston in the amount of $7,6,684. The new boxes will be mounted on new chassis replacing Units 7170, 7171, and 7173, which have exceeded the expected service life. All units will be disposed of in accordance with the city's surplus equipment policy. And this pricing was obtained through the HGA cooperative purchasing agreement, and staff has recommended approval of the resolution.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number six. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
I have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Durio?
I just have a question. I see where we have the purchase of the three ambulances boxes on this resolution, but I don't see the actual chassis on here. Were they already purchased?
We always do that separately. We found it to be a lot more affordable for the city if we do the boxes separate than the chassis.
So we haven't purchased the chassis yet?
I don't believe those have been to council yet. No, sir.
Okay. Those chassis are in that sales report. They're just approved.
Oh, they were?
They are.
Okay.
Good thing the fleet manager's here today.
Thank you. Okay, so Mayor Pro Tim Durio, you got your answer?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Now's the time for public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. Again, you have three minutes to speak. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes, and the red light will be your indication that your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Coltrane Sharp, 5150 Plant Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm here to get clarity on the city's process concerning the sale or lease of city properties. I'm not quite sure if we follow the same procedure for every property, whether it's AT&amp;T or any other properties that are available for public lease, purchase, or exchange. So if the council can be consistent with its policy So if the council can be consistent with its policy on leasing, purchasing, or exchange of value of real property accordance with Section 551.072 of the Government Code, land owned by the City of Beaumont, that would be very much appreciated because there are interested parties in public property that may not be at the council's attention at this moment. But if the process is followed, whatever that process is for the city, then those who may be willing to participate in the process can have that time to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Crabbe, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, staff. I guess I've been hearing the hearings on the Battleship Texas, and I'm really concerned about bringing it to Beaumont because of the cost and what have you, and whether Beaumont can really support it. And even, even if the, the view from Highway 10 Bridge is really adequate, because it's a lot of vegetation and what have you between the bridge and where the ship will land. I mean, be dark. Anyway, it'd be a great thing for Beaumont and Texas if we can support it. If we, you know, we can spend the money to have it brought here and, and set up and have people enjoy visiting. I guess I go all the way back to the seventh grade when I first visited the Battleship Texas over at the San Jacinto Monument. And I guess I've, I've watched the city video, TV channel quite a bit, and I enjoy seeing the interviews of the mayor and the attorney and the city clerk. And they're enjoyable to hear the history of people's lives as they, they go into their current jobs, their pathway. And I also like the department heads that explain their departments. I really like the sewer man that tells you, don't flush wet wipes in certain products because I've experienced that as, as being a landlord. And, and also just seeing the, hearing the sewer plant operation in the wetlands. I've sure enjoyed the cattail marsh, going out and seeing the birds different times of the year, and even taking people out there. So Beaumont has been my home all my life, so I've, I've enjoyed the activities, and I'm still enjoying it. So y'all take care of the business, and I'll let you know if I, if I want to add anything. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comment.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor, we have one more. Kenneth Earls, 1265 Condon, Beaumont, Texas.
I'm going to say this to you. There's three things that we have to think about. History, Battleship Texas, Texas, the here and now, the new fire engine that we're, we're talking about, and the ambulance, and the future. Right now, we have to decide whether we're going to be a university research center. We don't bring Lamar here to create new technology. We're going to be in trouble. If we don't increase our level of education here in this city, between high school to junior high and elementary, we're going to be in trouble in the future. I, I love the comments about the Battleship Texas, but it is not the most important thing that we need to be working on. We need to be working on the future of what's going to be happening, happening in this state in the next five to 10 years. Remember, the state is moving forward with high-speed rail. Does Beaumont want to be part of that? If we don't, we're going to be left behind. Number two, there's going to be three international airports built in this state in the next 10 to 20 years. We have the land and the, and the resources to make sure we get one of those. To me, the bottom line is, we have to be ready and prepared to move with these new technologies. We have to make sure that our people are ready for those things that are coming. And if we're not, Beaumont will be like Port Arthur. My heart breaks for Port Arthur. The things that we have in this city, Mobile Oil, for example. Mobile Oil is investing three times the amount of money that they're putting on that plant and putting wind turbines up in West Texas. Do you not know or realize that Ford, General Motors, and all the car dealers are now moving toward that thing called electric cars? We're going to, that plant may be here for the next 10, 15 years, but slowly it's going to leave here. And our, this...
Just finish your sentence.
If we don't look at the future, don't put no resources and make Lamar do its job on research and development, that's going to be the end of this city. Like I said, I love the idea of Battleship Texas, but can we truly afford it in comparison to what's coming in the future, the very near future? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we will have councilmember comment, and I will start with Mayor Pro Tim Duria.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments. I attended the Old Town Neighborhood Association meeting last night, very informative. I did give out some information on the new ward lines that was not correct. So I just want to let everybody know, the new ward lines do not have to be voted on by the folks. It was approved by council, and they will take effect in the May election. I just wanted to let everybody know that. Also, a little bad news, the bridge on Fennet Road that was supposed to be completed by the end of November, I was informed yesterday by text dot that it'd be towards the end of January. They've ran into some problems doing that. Also, I attended Councilman Turner's Children's Talent Show this Saturday, and it was outstanding. Man, I really thank you for doing that. The community and the city appreciate it. They always want us to do things for the city, and that was something nice. There are some very talented kids there. Some of them was even singing Old School. I, I had me tapping my foot. I really enjoyed it. I attended, Mr. Horace Hall had a 100-year-old birthday party this past weekend, and I went and read a proclamation. Mr. Hall's birthday was yesterday, the 19th, he made 100. Mr. Hall has seven kids, 34 grandkids, and 34 great-grandkids. And you know what, they were all at the birthday party. It was, it was really wonderful, I was glad to be a part of that. Also, I attended the National Disability Employment Awareness Event at LIT, when they awarded some folks that, you know, they had a rough time. You know, they've had some type of disability, but they've succeeded. They've all graduated from college, and they're, and they're working. And it's because of this, this organization right here. And also, whenever we get a chance, I would also like to get some clarity on the purchase of city property. Because I've had, I've been approached by many citizens about seeing, buying property owned by the city. And every time they approach the city about it, they're told something different. So we do need some type of clarity on that, because they have folks that's interested in redeveloping these vacant lots and red tag houses and stuff like that. But they, they're having problems figuring out what the process is for them to buy. So we need some clarity, we need that to be published on our public media, and, I mean, social media, and city website. So folks will have a better understanding of how to do that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
That's a lot. Thank you. Councilmember Gads.
Thank you, Mayor. The two speakers commented on Battleship Texas. I just want to remind them that as yet, we have not allocated as a council any funds for the acquisition or replacement of the Battleship Texas in Beaumont. What we have done is we have authorized the city administration to proceed in learning what steps we need to do in order to bring the Battleship Texas to Beaumont. And we've expressed a desire to bring the Battleship Texas to Beaumont. Obviously, all of that is going to be conditioned on funding and how much it's going to cost. Those are decisions that we will have to address at the appropriate time. But a journey of 1,000 miles begins with a single step, and we took that step last week. So we will continue to have opportunities to debate and discuss that topic as we move through that process, which could be lengthy. So much going on this past weekend. The Beaumont Children's Museum, Amanda, thank you for coming up here and telling us how many people were there. I attended it packed, just great. Over 50 trucks, how many?
50 trucks and 54 organizations, and five city parks.
Just, just an amazing thing for the kids to do. We had grandchildren come in from Houston just for this, and I know that there were others that came in for out of town as well. And that night, you can't be in two places at one time. But Councilmember Turner, I did come by to see your talent show. It was packed at the Jefferson. I mean, it was, it was great. I wish I could have stayed, and the reason I couldn't was because the Symphony of Southeast Texas with Bob Phillips and Kelly Phillips, Kelly used to be an anchorwoman here at Channel 6, they've been on a tour around the state and bringing with them music for the state of Texas, and a huge crowd at the Julie Rogers as well. But wait, there's more. This weekend, there's going to be Museum Madness, in which I believe the museums are going to be open for free with all kinds of exhibitions for the kids. Then there's a movie that night at the Jefferson Theater. There's going to be the organ being played. If, if you can't find something to do in Beaumont, you're not looking. So, you know, enjoy the beautiful weather and enjoy the things that we have to offer here in Beaumont.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Beaumont Children's Museum, congratulations. Big advocate of youth, and I appreciate you do for our kids in this area. Very much appreciate it. I just want to stress to all the seniors, if you're above the age of 65, we do have discounts for your water and sewer rates. I want to remind you, our weekly, please contact the Water Department and Sewer Department. They'll send you the paperwork. I think to my understanding, Chris, you have to have your ID as well scanned. Yeah, okay. So I just want to make sure I'm giving you guys accurate information. We got these discounts available, I want our seniors to take advantage of it, okay? The next thing is Leadership Beaumont, they had a graduating class on yesterday, and they've done a great job. Myself, Councilmember Gads, we were able to hear Kenny Williams speak, and I think you did a pretty good job. You had a lot of people excited. You talked about the strategic planning, and I'm letting you know I'm ready to get going, so. And lastly, I just want to thank the entire community for the support with the youth talent show. The final number, we had 998 people attend, so we had the whole bottom full, and we even had people in overflow in the balcony. This event was completely free to the community. First place got $1,000, second place got 500, third got 250. And every kid who participated, because we all had winners, received a trophy. So I just want to say thank you again and reiterate, you know, our youth is our future. We need to take a little bit more time with them.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. The midterms, November the 8th, is coming up. Early voting starts next Monday, the 24th runs through Friday, November the 4th. Please make sure you go out and vote, be a part of this democratic process. And as everyone else has said, great job on the talent. Went by and stayed for a while, and it was a great night. So congratulations to Councilman Turner, and it was good for the, for the citizens of Beaumont. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember...
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say, there's, there is a lot of things going on in Beaumont. And this weekend, Lamar University has a home football game playing Prairie View A&amp;M. And there's a ceremony on Saturday to honor some of the players that play there. Donnie Davis is one receiving an award. And we also, I also acknowledge a well-loved and well-respected athlete and administrator has gone, gone on to the other side. Luke Jackson, he's, he was a longtime employee at the City of Beaumont, ran the rec center. And so I'd just like to extend condolences to his family.
Thank you. City manager?
Just one note, Mayor. As you, as you witnessed, we had bids on vehicles, a lot of vehicles today, and we're just saying that due to inflation, it, what we had planned early in the year, those prices are really going up. So just be mindful in the future as we come forward with that, that there's a substantial change in the price of vehicles and equipment as we go forward. And, and staff is working to work with that and adjust and bring things forward to you. But don't be surprised if something comes and it seems over budget in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and city attorney, Ms. Reed.
Are you reading my name?
I'm trying to write, and, yes.
Just want to extend my congratulations to Councilman Turner on her well-attended event.
Thank you. And Barrett? Mr. Boone? Todd? And Tina? Thank you. So I have the final say-so, and I would like to read. At the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to the deliberation purchase, lease, exchange, or value of real property in accordance with Section 551.072 of the Government Code, to wit land owned by the City of Beaumont at 125 Magnolia, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Also, consider matters to deliberate the employment evaluation duties of a public officer or employee in accordance with Section 551.074 of the Government Code, to wit specifically Attorney Sheray Reed, city clerk Tina Broussard, and Chief Magistrate Craig Lively. Thank you. I would like to say again, Councilmember Turner, congratulations. I'm sorry I could not attend because I had two parties at my own house up until about 11 o'clock with a fantastic video game trailer that the kids just loved. But thank you on a great, successful talent show. And don't know how my church member, Navea, finished, but...
She's in place.
She's, she's, she's awesome, and she, she is. And she's somebody to, to be watching. And again, congratulations. I'm sure it'll be more in the future. Also, to Mr. Hall, who made 100-year happy birthday, Mr. Hall. And I love attending birthdays of people that are 100 years old. My grandmother lived to be 103. And two of my great friends were over 100. My grandmother lived to be a hundred and three and two of my great friends were over a hundred years old. So, uh, that's kind of special to me and every opportunity that I have to attend, um, I make every effort and don't want to miss it because that's going to be something that we probably won't always see in our lifetime. So again, Ms. Hall, happy birthday. Uh, also on Thursday, I attended, uh, the seventh anniversary of the Symphony of Southeast Texas and Bob and Kelly Phillips were, uh, in attendance on Thursday night and Bob Phillips was sitting right across from me and I kept turning around and I kept saying, I know this guy. He looks so familiar. I just saw him the other day and I'm thinking he's somebody running around town. And I thought, oh my God, it's, um, Bob Phillips from Texas Country Reporter Show, which has always been one of my favorite shows and, uh, they were there on Thursday night and it was a great program and, um, the brass, um, band that, that played, I mean, they played several different melodies, uh, from West Side Story and, uh, it, it was just an amazing event, an amazing event Thursday night. Um, also, again, uh, reiterate what Councilmember Felschaw said. Uh, early voting starts October the twenty-fourth through November the fourth. Um, and then, uh, election day is November the eighth. Asking everyone to please get out, exercise, uh, your right to vote and be committed to voting in this upcoming election. And, um, also would like to, uh, give condolences to Mr. Luke Jackson who played with Bill Russell and was one of the original twin towers in the NBA. And, um, he was also Parks and Rec Director here for the city of Beaumont. So I want to send condolences, uh, to his family. Uh, the funeral will be held, um, on the twenty-ninth of, uh, October, Saturday. And, um, in less than one hour, uh, we have, uh, approved purchase of six new garbage trucks, three new ambulants, and one new fire truck. And it is now two-twenty-two, um, which we started at one-thirty. So we got a lot of, got a lot of great things, um, moved in less than an hour. And I would like to thank each and every one of you for attending today. And to the Children's Museum, thank you for the work that you do. I saw the news with that parking lot, but you had a perfect day, perfect weather, great attendance. And again, thank you for what you do because the children are our future. Uh, so we're going to recess into executive session and thank you for coming and go out and spread the love. Bye-bye.